Yes, Mr Riley Smith.
My Lords, my Lady, good morning. I appeal on behalf of the appellant, Mr Ball. My learned friend, Mr Wignall, appears on behalf of the respondent.
Yeah.
May I first just check that the Court has the relevant documents? They should consist of a core bundle and supplementary bundle.
Yeah.
An authorities bundle and an additional authorities bundle, I hope paginated sequentially, which includes colonge and pifseum. There should then be a skeleton and a supplementary skeleton from both the appellant and the respondent.
Yeah.
There is also an application to allowing an additional document, which I intend to deal with briefly at the outset.
Well, can we deal with that? Hopefully, we can deal with that quite quickly.
Yes.
Obviously, we've read it. It looks as if it's of marginal relevance, but we have considered it. So is the best way of dealing with that, subject to anything Mr Wignall wants to say, for us to decide to simply have the hearing? And then if there is a question about admissibility, we'll deal with that in the judgment.
I'm grateful, my Lord, yes.
Mr Wignall?
That's it about that, my Lord, thank you.
Right, okay.
It's been on what I think is a day-benning essay basis.
Yeah.
I'm quite content with that.
Fine. Now, Mr Riley Smith, have you, the two of you, been able to talk about how long each of you will be? I mean, we have a day. But this term, I've been unlucky that appellants seem to be just about getting going and it's lunchtime. So I wondered if you'd had a chance to talk about how you're dividing the day up?
My Lord, not in relation to this appeal.
That's the only appeal I can make.
Yes, of course.
Call me old-fashioned, but there it is.
In terms of the timings that were required in the court below, two days were given. It was easily fitted into a day. And I would envisage that the same time estimates would be appropriate, which is that I'll be on my feet until lunch, and after which Mr Wignall will be responding for a couple of hours, giving me an hour or two to respond to that. So we are...
An hour?
That doesn't... That's a court into a pipe pot.
Or...
Replies tend to be sort of 15 minutes tops. So, Mr Wignall, does that...
Well, if it helps, you've got a lot of paperwork. You've got a skeleton argument.
We've read it all.
And you've read a lot of material. There are a lot of references in my documents. If I take an hour, famous last words, but if I take an hour, I would be slightly surprised.
Okay, well, we did rather wonder that, given the amount of written material. But it's, we're not here to hurry anybody. I'm just anxious to ensure that we finish by half past four. All right, well, that's very helpful, Mr Wignall. Thank you very much. All right, so, Mr Riley Smith, you can take it that we've read everything. We do have, we think, a lot of appreciation of the issues. But then, please do take your own course.
I'm grateful, my Lord. This appeal concerns really a question of law on which there is no direct authority, which is whether there is a power to vary an abatement notice. It's an appeal against the judgment of Mr Justice Eyre, who recognized there was no direct authority on the issue, but did find that he was bound by Everett, which found that there was an implied power of withdrawal. Alternatively, Mr Justice Eyre also found that if not bound by Everett, he would imply in such a power by necessary implication.
Yeah.
The grounds of appeal are set out at paragraph five. And if I may just set out how the appellant intends to deal with them. The appellant notes that Lord Justice Lewison, in granting permission, noted that Everett was not binding on the Court of Appeal. However, the structure of the appellant's skeleton, to deal firstly why the learned judge was wrong, to find that Everett was not distinguishable; secondly, to find if Everett was not binding, that a variation power would arise by necessary implication; and then to deal with whether the learned judge was wrong, not to exclude that the variation power could increase restrictions. There is significant crossover between one and two. Mr Justice Eyre found that the reasons why Everett was not distinguishable also were the reasons why a power would be necessarily implied in. And therefore, the appellant still intends to, as it were, deal with the submissions and the structure set out in the skeleton, given the crossover, recognizing that this court is not bound.
It isn't binding, is it?
Is not bound by Everett.
No.
In relation to ground three, the appellant does intend to deal with that at the end. The reason being that the appellant's primary submissions are even looked in isolation, so-called downwards variation, a variation which would arguably have the effect of reducing the restrictions on a notice. The argument is good that there should be no power even for that. However, the appellant would say that the case is strengthened or endorsed by the fact that it is clear that there can be no upwards variation power. And why that endorses and supports the appellant's cases, if there can be no power to upwards, increase the restrictions on a notice, there should also be no power to decrease. And that's why I will leave those submissions at the end.
Okay.
The background to the decision is set out at paragraphs seven to 10 of the skeleton. In brief, it concerns an abatement notice controlling a noise nuisance arising from a racing circuit issued in 2014. That notice, in its schedule, set out a number of restrictions required to secure compliance. It included within it clause 21, which allowed the operator to apply to the defendant to vary, to make, to request any variation to this schedule in writing. And if a variation is agreed by the council, it shall take effect only on receipt of written confirmation. In applying for any variation, the operator must remind the council variation only takes effect on receipt by the operator of the council's written confirmation. So just to note there, and this really plays into ground three. But while in practice, it seems unlikely that an operator would ever apply to vary a notice to increase the restrictions on it, the wording of clause 21 are to allow any variation to be made to the notice. And purporting to use the power under 21, the interested party applied to vary it in relation to restrictions concerning the length of a lunchtime break on Boxing Day, to allow for a three-day event and to increase the flexibility of when successive events could be held. And the respondent issued a formal decision, found in core bundle 182 to 185, to make permanent those variations. Just if I may, two points to note in relation to that decision. Firstly, it allowed them, but pending, a yearly review, which, on the wording of the decision notice, would be unilaterally communicated to the operator by the 30th of November each year.
A minute, page which?
Yes, of course. Core bundle, 182 to 185.
Core bundle?
Core bundle.
182 is...
Is the decision notice to vary the notice?
182 is the end of the judicial review. Yeah. What is in mine?
My apologies.
186 is the requested...
Yes. Yes, so 186, so the pagination on my digital copy is different. My apologies, but I have a hard copy, which I'll use, which I think accords with the bench's pagination. My apologies for that. The decision is 186. And this is the, this is the decision that is challenged. And if I may, just note two points to the court. The first is, and it can be seen under the decision middle column, that while it is a permanent variation, the three requests that are allowed, they're subject to an annual review undertaken by the council as to whether it should remain or revert back. And the outcome is seemingly unilaterally communicated to the operator by the 30th of November each year. And I'll return to that point in my submissions as to the practical difficulties that arise if a power of variation exists. The second point to note, in terms of this decision, is it doesn't seemingly result in a new abatement notice being issued. It is a freestanding document which on its own varies the notice that still stands. The council have not, as it were, updated the terms and issued another version of the notice. And again, I will return to that point in terms of the practical difficulties that may exist if a power of variation exists.
So just to spell that out, that means that in order to know what the terms of the abatement notice are, you have to get the original document and any variations that have been made since 2014.
Yes.
And this one, and then also the original abatement notice accordingly.
Yes.
The original notice is at 190, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Who is that served on?
The decision, or the, sorry, the notice itself.
Well, first of all, the notice.
The notice is served on the, and my apologies, my Lord, I'll just double-check the statute provisions before I give the answer, but...
If you're going to come through all the statutory provisions, then tell me to shut up.
No, not at all, my Lord. I am, but I believe the notice is served on the... It's the, yes, it's the person responsible for the nuisance. And where it, it's section 82. I'm happy to deal with this point now.
No, no, deal with it when you're on time, because it's complicated provisions, and I don't want to distract you.
And, my lady, just to respond further to your ladyship's point, to understand the effect of the notice as varied, in this case, it would not just be the notice, it would not just be the variation decision here. It would also by implication be any, what the outcome of the yearly review had been, and whether in effect the yearly review concluded by the 30th of November each year was in place for that year or had reverted it back to the original. My Lord, I can deal with this letter was served on the, or sent to the operator who made the request. Also, in this instance, the council had carried out or attempted to carry out a consultation exercise as to whether the variation had been made. I believe the letter was also therefore sent out to those who had been consulted. If I may just turn my back for a moment, just... Yes.
Is there somewhere on the council's website where the public can look at noise abatement notices or not?
I... I don't believe there is something similar to, for example, a planning register in the planning regime, where permissions are there and enforcement notices are there. My apologies if that's wrong. Mr Wignall may correct me. I don't, but I don't believe there is a statutory requirement.
Mr Wignall's on his phone.
Well, unlike the planning system and the environmental permitting system, there is no register of notices. So the public would never know exactly what a notice says. Only the operator would know. You would have seen from the, from the schedule to the abatement notice that there is a requirement that the operator produces a calendar. And indeed, the only way that a local resident will get certainty as to what the effect is going to be and what racing is going to take place is by seeing the calendar when it's printed.
I see.
But there is no, there is no, there is no public register unlike the planning or environmental permitting system.
That's helpful, thank you.
I'm grateful, my lady.
But I suspect it's on the, on the, on the council's website that I will...
Well, that's what I originally asked.
Oh, so sorry.
Yeah.
Returning then to the appellant's skeleton and where the appellant sets out the relevant legal principles. I appreciate, my Lord, you've indicated the Court has read these. So if I may, I'll take a few points at speed, but just to emphasize if they're relevant.
Do please emphasize whatever you like. Don't, don't, there's nothing worse than the court saying, "It's read everything", and then you both quickly become a part that either they haven't, or...
They've forgotten it.
They've forgotten it.
They haven't understood it.
Anything of any importance, please do make any submissions you want.
I'm grateful. The rights and powers conferred by a statute include those that are necessarily implied. And the question of necessary implication was considered by Lord Hobhouse. It is a passage that the court is familiar with, and I don't think there is a dispute as to it. But to emphasize, of course, that when talking of necessary implication rather than reasonable implication, it distinguishes what may have been sensible or reasonable for Parliament to have included, or what Parliament would if they'd thought about it, probably have included. And what is clear from the express language of the statute, that the statute must have included. And it's a matter of express language that is refined by Lady Hale in black, that that includes considering the wording, the context, and the purpose. I note that that approach was taken in pifseum in terms of that the test is one of necessity rather than convenience in relation to implying in of a power.
So to that extent, it's no different to implying a term into a contract?
Yes.
Necessary, not reasonable?
Yes. My learned friend, in his skeleton, notes the case of NYKK, which again reiterated these principles, to which I don't believe there's a dispute. But there is one element, if I may, of NYKK that I wish to emphasize, which is found at page 866 of the authorities bundle. And it is at paragraph 44.
Hold on a minute, so it's tab...
It will be tab...
This is Lord Justice Poplar?
Yes, it will, it will be tab, my apologies, tab 40.
Yeah, yeah.
And at paragraph 44, it's "one reason for such approach is that the relevant factor against making the implication is if it would have been easy enough for the instrument to have said it expressly, but not, but did not do so." This is not a sufficient test in itself, but it means that, Lord Justice Underhill put it in the Ocadina case, "it's a healthy principle that the court should be slow to give a statute an effect which is not expressly stated. Parliament should say what it means." And I will return to that principle to endorse the submissions the appellant makes in that a limited power of variation does exist within the regime. It existed in terms of a power given on appeal to the magistrate's court when the 1990 Act was made and passed. And it would have therefore been easy enough for Parliament to have expanded that power within the 1990 Act, but they did not do so.
Yeah.
Turning next to the statutory nuisance regime. And if I may, at this point in time, just at the outset of these submissions, deal with a point that is perhaps more, more significance is placed on it by my learned friend in his skeleton, which is the legislative history of the statutory nuisance regime, and whether that assists the court in the question which it has to determine today. In brief, the appellant doesn't think that the legislative history of the statutory nuisance regime here really helps or assists the court beyond the fact, note that there has never been in the various provisions my learned friend sets out in detail in his skeleton. There's never been a power of variation in the type sought now, beyond that very limited of power given to the magistrate's court on appeal. And by that...
So we need to distinguish. The magistrates have the power to vary in the circumstances of an appeal. So when you say there's never been a power of variation, you mean the local authority has never had a power of variation?
Yes, my Lord, the local authority has never had the power of variation. And therefore, my learned friend's skeleton makes a number of submissions about the importance of the always-speaking principle in terms of statutory interpretation, and that statutes should be interpreted in light of developments that have occurred since the act has passed. I believe my learned friend's point put, put at paragraph 34 of his skeleton, 37 is, "the complexities that would now require variation could not have been foreseen when Parliament passed, it must be the 1990 Act." And I hope it's appropriate just to deal with it briefly now, which is, the appellant's response to that is, Parliament could have in 1990 foreseen the need for a power of variation for complex matters in terms of the control of statutory nuisances. The 1990 Act drew quite heavily on the control of Pollution Act 1974 and the controls that were within that. And it was, not unheard of, it was quite common to have these types of notices which set out steps and set out requirements in detail. One way of, as it were, making that point good is that the history of this site was that there was a previous abatement notice issued under the previous statutory regime in 1985. I can take the court to it, it's in the supplementary bundle, but it has similar steps, the controls on decibel levels and elements like that, as the notice does in 2014.
So this is the 1985 notice?
Yes.
Don't take us to it, but what's the page number?
It is found in the supplementary bundle at 77 to 81.
And is that, that's, that's in the paper copy?
I will double-check that the, yeah, 77 to 81, yes. Tab eight. Or, sorry, within tab three, the start of tab three.
So that's the old note, that's the previous notice of 1985 under the old regime?
Yes.
Under the control of pollution?
Yes.
1974. Yeah.
So the appellant doesn't say that the court is assisted here by looking at the legislative history or by applying the always-speaking principle to find there's a power of variation. Turning then to look at the regime in the 1990 Act in more detail. Under section 80, a local authority is under statutory duty to serve an abatement notice in three scenarios. The first is where a nuisance is occurring, exists. The second is where a statutory nuisance has not yet occurred, but is likely to do so in the future. And the third is where a statutory nuisance did exist, has stopped, but is likely to reoccur. And in those three scenarios, a local authority is under a statutory duty to serve an abatement notice under section 81. And that's a point recognized in the case of Carrick. And of course, where it's appropriate to be addressed under the Environmental Protection Act. Section 80 does have some elements where it's contaminated land. There are limited exceptions to that as to whether the regime is appropriate. There is one element of limited discretion given by Parliament to local authorities. And that relates to where there is a noise nuisance and section 80, 2A to 2E.
So shall we look at the, shall we have the section 80 before us whilst you're referring to it?
Yes, it's authorities bundle, page 159. 158, it starts at.
Yeah, so, and you're showing us...
Yes.
...the limited discretion, and that's section which?
Section 80 subsection 2A to 2E. Page 159. And this is where a local authority is allowed to delay in relation to a noise nuisance a notice by seven days in an attempt to persuade the relevant person to take other steps to avoid, to address the nuisance. But the reason the discretion is so limited, or the appellant says the discretion is so limited, is that after seven days, if the nuisance still exists or is likely to occur or reoccur, then they must issue the abatement notice. And that is why the appellant describes the regime as being non-discretionary, mandatory, binary at that first stage. If a statutory nuisance exists, occurs, sorry, is likely to occur or reoccur, then they must issue the notice. There is no ability to opt out of those obligations. To address my lordship's question at 158 in terms of who the notice is served upon, section 82 notes that the notice is served on the person responsible for the nuisance. If the nuisance arises from a defect of structural character, then it's served on the owner. And unless the person responsible for the nuisance cannot be found, well, then it's on the owner as well. An abatement notice when issued will have a time limit for compliance. But the appellant says it's important to note that the notice does not expire once the time limit for compliance ends or the notice is complied with. Instead, a notice continues indefinitely to prohibit the recurrence of a nuisance. That is a point that was explored in relation to the previous legislation, the control of noise pollution, but was explored by Lord Justice Bingham in the case of Guppy. And just given Mr Justice Eyre's findings in his judgment about the concerns on a notice that will continue indefinitely, I think it is worth just briefly going to Lord Justice Bingham's findings in Guppy.
Yeah.
Guppy is at...
Tab 16.
Tab 16.
Yeah.
At 252. And the context of Guppy was a challenge was made to a notice that didn't have time limits for the recurrence prohibition in the notice. And that was challenged as whether that was valid or not. And Lord Justice Bingham considers seven propositions put forward by the appellant and for the purposes of this appeal. At 252, if I can take the court to 252. Firstly, just between A and B, I think this is, this is an apt summary of what a notice does. The effect of this notice as drafted plainly was to require the applicant to stop making the noise at once and not to let the noise start again.
Yeah.
And again, just the comments and the use of the word as well in the last paragraph in 252, between G and H. "In my judgment, therefore, the prohibition on recurrence took effect at once, as from the moment of abatement, in this case, the switching off of the sound-implifying equipment, and remained in force indefinitely." So this is recognizing in the statutory fore runner, in relation to the 1974 Act, but the wording is drawn over to the 1990 Act, recognizing that the operation of a notice is that it will last indefinitely to control the recurrence of a nuisance. However, it is right, and I note at paragraph 16, if the appropriate person changes, if the person who runs the site, the owner, whoever was serving the notice, if that changes, then a new notice has to be issued to bite against that person because you can only prosecute the person who was served with the notice under section 84. So if the owner of a premises that's under an abatement notice changes... So if the owner of a premises that's under an abatement notice changes, then a new notice will have to be issued.
And that's, is that Guppy or is that?
That, that, that's the effect of section eighty-four, or, or the reason why it has to be done is that the offence is, or can, the, the offence only arises from the person served with the notice.
So that's section eighty?
Subsection four.
Because that, that makes the, that links the criminal offence?
To the person.
The person on whom the abatement services, services need to serve.
When an abatement notice is issued, it is either issued under section eighty-one A, which simply requires the abatement of, of the nuisance. And this was a point that was?
Sorry, eight, it's always the trouble with sections that start with the number eighty, seventy, sixty. So eighty subsection?
One A.
Little a.
Little a.
So that, that is, that, that's the obligation to serve the notice?
Well, well, that is also, there are two types of notice that can be served under section eighty subsection one. There's a notice that's served under section eighty subsection one little a, which simply requires the abatement of the nuisance, put in general terms. And, and, and this was a point that, that was argued before Mr Justice Eyre about whether in effect a notice could be issued which does not abate, simply restricts the nuisance, keeps the nuisance in place but controls it at a lesser level. Mr Justice, that was a point, interpretation put forward by the respondent. The appellant said that no, a notice must abate the nuisance. That's dealt with by Mr Justice Eyre between, I think, paragraphs thirty-six and thirty-eight of his judgment, but in effect agreeing with the appellant, and I, I don't believe there's a dispute as to this point between the parties, it's not challenged by my lenient friend, that a notice must require the nuisance to be abated. It, it, it can't keep the nuisance in place but limited, restricted in some way. And the reason I, I, I just make or emphasise that point now is the discussion as to whether a notice should be varied to reflect best practicable means. Or the alternative, I, I said there were two types of notice. The alternative is that a notice is issued under section eighty subsection one little A and little B, which is where it, it sets out the works or steps which are necessary for the purpose of abating the nuisance or, or, or preventing it occurring again if, if it's not in existence currently. And as set out in, in, in the case, or examined in the case of Elverton Park, there are a number of authorities on it. If, if a notice is purporting to be what's called a steps notice, purporting to be not only saying abate the nuisance but telling the operator how they are to do it, it needs to be clear and it needs to be certain, and if it is not, then it is invalid. And that is a principle recognised in, in, in a case going back to the nineteen thirty-six Public Health Act in Fenny Stratford. The extract is at paragraph eighteen, I don't need to take the court to the judgement beyond that, but setting out why the importance of a notice being clear, certain and unambiguous given the criminal sanctions that can arise.
In relation to the, the works part?
What, in relation to?
Taking steps.
It, it, it is a, a, a comment on both, but yes, the issue of certainty and clarity and unambiguity is often raised in the context of a steps notice where the, the court, sorry, where the local authority has said, do these steps carry out these steps?
Yes. That's only the same as a mandatory injunction. If it can't be clearly defined, you can't have a mandatory injunction requiring works done. Yeah. Yeah.
One of the, well, there are many reasons for that, but, but an element, I think it is important to highlight to the court is, under section eighty-one, which are supplementary provisions, which again, I, I don't necessarily need to take the court to, but just to note their existence, a local authority has the power to not only prosecute, but they can take direct action, they can carry out themselves actions to abate the nuisance and execute the notice. For the court's reference, that's section eighty-one subsection three. And there's also an ability to seek, take conjunctive actions as well under section eighty-one. The, the reason I, I highlight in particular the, the power to take, for the local authority themselves to take action, is that, is that the steps are quite important in the way in which they're set and clear and unambiguous, is that a power actually flows from that, that the local authority can go in and carry out the, the works or the steps themselves. There's a right of appeal against an abatement notice on the recipient of the notice, that's section eighty subsection three, but subject to a strict twenty-one day time limit, it cannot be extended. And it's dealt with under the Statutory Nuisance Appeal Regulations nineteen ninety-five. Regulation two of those sets out the, the, the limited grounds of appeal. They're extracted at paragraph twenty of my skeleton.
Do we have them in the rule?
Yes.
What's the page in there?
Of course. They are at tab twelve.
Yeah.
And regulation two is at page one hundred and ninety-eight. And grounds include that the authority has refused unreasonably to accept compliance with alternative requirements, the requirements of the notice are unreasonable in character extent or unnecessary. Ground E is the ground in relation to best practicable means, and if I may, I will leave discussion of best practicable means just for, for a moment's time when I come to discuss it in the context of the, it being a defence to prosecution. And at one, sorry, at, at, at two, page two hundred and two hundred and one, regulation two subsection five is set out, which sets out the powers that a court has?
Sorry, I'm, I was just noting something else, my fault. Which page?
It's page two hundred to two hundred and one.
Yeah, yeah.
Regulation two subsection five sets out the powers a court has on appeal. And the, 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 the two points to note from this is firstly, that it is a variation power, but only in favour of the appellant.
Yeah.
And secondly, that where an abatement notice has been varied in favour of the appellant, it shall be final, but otherwise have the effect as so varied as if it had been made by the local authority.
The variation power then arises under this regulation and not under the statute?
It, it arises from this statutory instrument, it doesn't arise from the primary act.
It's only in favour of the appellant?
Yes.
By implication, that's a dangerous phrase to use, but would it follow that the ways in which the order can be varied, the notice can be varied, are tied to the grounds upon which an appeal can be brought under two-two?
Yes, my lord, and, and in particular, and this is perhaps the reason why I have, this is the reason why I've, I've indicated or highlighted in my skeleton, ground C?
Yes.
That, that, that a ground of appeal may be raised, the argument is that these steps are, are unnecessary, they're unreasonable in character to an extent, that is in which the power of variation in the appellant's favour would usually, would, would be exercised then if, if that ground succeeds.
Mr Riley Smith, do we have schedule three to the EPA?
Yes, we, we do, schedule three.
I'm, I'm just interested to see what paragraph one sub-paragraph four of schedule three says, which is the power under which the appeal regulations are made.
Yes.
Schedule three, I think, is one eight nine?
Yeah.
Or elsewhere too, actually. One?
One is?
One eight one.
Two. Yes, one eight two.
Paragraph one.
And, and, and it, yes, it's, it's subsection four.
Yeah. It's a paragraph, it's a paragraph, so it's sub-paragraph four. Well, that sends us off on a paper chase to section two hundred and ninety of the nineteen thirty-six Act.
Have we got that? Have we got section two ninety?
I, I don't, well, we, we, we do have some elements of the Public Health Act, I'm, I'm not sure we have two ninety in the bundle.
So the regulations are made and?
The regulations are made.
Paragraph, it, this says one four?
Yeah.
Of schedule three. And we look at one four on page one eight two, and that may make regulations as to appeals, and the regulations may in particular, and then it sets out four things. None of which refer to variation.
It, it, yes.
Which is why the section two ninety of the?
Yeah.
Nineteen thirty-six Act refer to variation. We haven't got section two ninety. Okay, well then, that, that, that's the power to make the regulations and? So, don't take time on it now, but I think we probably need to see two ninety.
Yes.
And the regulations are, these are them in full, is it behind tab twelve?
Yes.
So there's, so it deals with appeals, it also deals with powers of suspension?
I, I was going to, yeah, come on to, to deal with the power of suspension, the way in which it reflects, if I may, the purpose of that. If I may just make one further comment on the power of variation. And my apologies, this was in my skeleton in the High Court, it's not repeated here, but, or it's not repeated in my skeleton. The power of variation, the, the provision I've taken the court to in terms of the variation power in favour of the appellant, that was in the equivalent regulations in nineteen ninety, so the fore runner to these. But perhaps of, of more relevance is it existed in the equivalent regulations under the Control of Pollution Act nineteen eighty-four, the Control of Noise Appeal Regulations nineteen seventy-five.
On.
Yes.
That's the nineteen seventy-four Control of Pollution Act?
Yes.
And the regulations were what?
The Control of Noise brackets Appeals Regulations nineteen seventy-five.
Control of Noise in brackets Appeals?
Yes.
Close brackets, Regulations nineteen seventy-five.
The, if, if, if the court? This, the court has a, has, has a note in, in core bundle eight, page eighty-two, which is an extract from my skeleton, in, in footnote one, just, just for ease of the court's note, that, that point is, is put.
I'm sorry, what was the reference to your skeleton?
It, it's in the High Court skeleton, which is found at core bundle, page eighty-two.
Thank you.
And footnote one, I hope on page eighty-two should set out that point. My apologies, I, I interrupted your lordship in relation to regulation three, if I may return then to?
No, I don't think, I, I think I was just noticing?
Yes.
I don't think I've noticed before that the regulations also deal with suspension.
Yes, and, and the relevance of that in relation to this appeal is that what regulation three does is it sets out the limited circumstances when an notice on appeal will be suspended. So the starting point is that when an appeal is made against an abatement notice, it isn't stayed while the appeal is pending. It is only suspended where in effect their compliance would require expenditure by the person who received it, carrying out works before the hearing. Or, or there's a subcategory where in relation to the noise, it's, it's caused in the course of performance of a duty imposed by law. And that there is not, the nuisance is not injurious to health or of such a limited duration that suspension would render it of no practical effect. But even then, it is possible for, in terms of the expenditure, and, and so this is too itty, so schedule three is drafted in a slightly complex way in that it, it requires things to, to not happen. But at subsection two on Authority's bundle, page two O two, subsection two little B, notes that even if the notice would require work to be carried out, which would require expenditure, it's possible that if that is not disproportionate to the public benefit, to be expected in the period from such compliance, it can still be required to do it. Why I, I highlight regulation three is it, it, it reflects and it endorses the purpose of the Act, which is the, to provide the public with protection from statutory nuisances. So that even where an appeal is pending, actually, it will often be the case that, 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 that the notice remains in effect and as it were, the public get the benefit of the doubt, and it is abated until the court overturns it on appeal.
Who decides?
The?
Who decides whether the expenditure would or would not be disproportionate?
So it, it, it is a, a, a matter that's reflected in, and if I may, so subsection one B C, these are the elements that are required for it to be suspended. Now, it's either paragraph two does not apply, or it does apply but the requirements of paragraph three have not been met.
No, I get that.
Yeah, but, but the, the, the local authority on the face of the notice say whether they consider it is apt to be suspended or not when an appeal is made.
Who gives them that power?
That is, that is the, well, it, it, it's a power that, that, that comes from regulation three because it's a requirement?
It is, but that, hence my question, who has the power? Who, I mean, this is quite a complicated balancing act. Who, who decides the, the, where the balance lies under three? Is it the local authority or is it the magistrate?
In first instance, it would seem to be the local authority because they, they are the ones who must, for this to be, for this to be an issue, comply with the requirements of paragraph three, which is for the abatement notice to include a statement that paragraph two applies. But then if?
But if the person's prosecuted for an offence and the local authority are, are, are arguing that the notice wasn't suspended, then it would be the magistrates who decided? that the notice wasn't suspended, then it would be the magistrates who decided whether, in fact, the suspension provisions applied.
Is this under an appeal, my apologies, or a prosecution?
Well, no, prosecution.
So, I think under a prosecution, the suspension provisions wouldn't apply. These in relation to it being, the notice being suspended pending an appeal being made against it.
No, but if somebody appeals and there's an argument about whether or not the provisions of the notice are suspended pending the appeal, if you had a zealous local authority, they might prosecute the person for failing to comply with the notice pending the appeal. And then if there were such a prosecution, there might be a dispute between the appellant and the local authority in front of the magistrates about whether or not the offence had been committed. And then the magistrates would have to decide whether or not the suspension provisions applied on the facts, wouldn't they?
Yes, and it would fall, so, and it would come, I was going to say, also in an appeal, the magistrates could, at first hearing, I suppose, suspend the notice, contrary to what the local authority had said there.
Well, they don't have an express power to suspend the notice, do they? Anyway, this is probably a side issue
Yes.
for the purposes of this case.
My apologies, I'll just check that Regulation Two, in terms of the appeal, doesn't deal with it. Yes, my apologies, I can't assist further in relation to that, in relation to Regulation Two. But I don't believe it has a material bearing on matters before this appeal beyond it illustrates the purpose of the Act. A failure to apply with the notice is an offence under section eighty, subsection four. And to go to the wording of that, found at paragraph one, sorry, page 159 of the Authorities' Bundle. The offence is if a person on whom the abatement notice is served without reasonable excuse contravenes or fails to comply with any requirement or prohibition imposed by the notice, they're guilty of an offence. And that is something that can be prosecuted by private prosecution by a resident as well as by the local authority. And that was set out in the case of sovereign rubber. If I may turn next to best practicable means, which was a point not explored in the authorities and the submissions made in the High Court, but does have relevance to this appeal, given the consideration and reliance on it by Mr. Justice Ayer. Best practicable means will be a ground of appeal. And in certain circumstances, it will also be a defence to an offence under section eighty, subsection four, if best practicable means were used. I extract at paragraph twenty-three in my skeleton, section eighty, subsection seven, where best practicable means is defined. Sorry, or best practicable means the offence is set out. The definition, my apologies, is, and, sorry, the defence is the best practicable means were used to prevent or counteract the effects of the nuisance. The term best practicable means carries a statutory definition or guidance at section seventy-nine, subsection nine. It is interpreted by reference to the following provisions. Practicable means, reasonably practicable, having regard, among other things, to local conditions and circumstances, to the current state of technical knowledge and to the financial implications. And the means to be employed include the design, installation, maintenance and manner and periods of operation of plant and machinery and the design, construction and maintenance of buildings and structures. The point to note from that drafting is that best practicable means is highly fact-specific and it can be ever-changing. Because it's by reference to the current state of technical knowledge and to financial implications. What was best practicable means in 1995 may not be best practicable means in 2024. The time at which best practicable means must be shown, in the context of an appeal, is when the notice was issued. In the context of a prosecution happening after years down the line, after a notice has not been appealed or upheld on appeal, is in relation, obviously, to the time at which it is alleged the nuisance, or, sorry, I should say, the time at which it's alleged the notice was breached. So, the role of best practicable means in the statutory nuisance regime is limited to where it is a ground of appeal or a defence to a criminal prosecution. The burden of showing it, or proving it, I should say, rests on the recipient of the notice, therefore, in those two contexts. And it's for the magistrate's court to decide it. What is not the role of the local authority to do is to identify whether best practicable means were present when they're complying with their duty as to issuing an abatement notice against statutory nuisance. That is a question, a binary question of whether a statutory nuisance exists or doesn't exist. It is only relevant as to the effect of the notice. And that was recognised by Mr. Justice Newman in the case of Manley in dismissing an argument that was made that a best practicable means defence would fail if it couldn't eliminate the nuisance. And if I may take the court to Manley, not just for the extract I've quoted, but for what I think is a useful finding the judge made as to best practicable means. It is at tab... Manley is found, the nineteen ninety-nine Manley is found at tab twenty-four. Starting on Authorities' Bundle, page 407. If I may take the court to 412. The extract.
Great first paragraph of this judgment. Having won a Legal Blog Award two years running for best opening paragraph of a judgment, I'm always on the lookout for even better than my own, and that is certainly a contender.
Yes, the Siberian Husky.
Completely irrelevant to the submissions you were making, but I thought I'd share that with you.
Well, I'm stuck at the first line of the representation. The Right Honourable Vicar Dillon is trying to...
There are a number of enjoyable elements in, if I may say, a lot of statutory nuisance case law on the examples that the court has had to consider.
So, it is very tactful for Lord Justice Simon Brown, as he then was, to ensure that Mr. Justice Newman gave the judgment of the court. Okay, so we were on page four hundred and...
Four hundred and twelve.
Yeah.
And the second paragraph from the bottom that starts, there are two aspects to this question of best practicable means. Mr. Justice Newman notes, Parliament has given the recipient of an abatement notice a ground of appeal entitling that person to apply, to have it set aside, if he, or, I think that should be she, can show on the balance of probabilities that although the business is creating a nuisance, nevertheless, the best practicable means are being used to prevent or counteract it, and the notice must be set aside. The extract, which I've quoted in my skeleton, comes at 413, which related to the argument made before the court that because best practicable means is defined as being only applied so far as is compatible with any duty, it was said to be that best practicable means must stop the nuisance because otherwise it would be contrary with the duty of the local authority. And that was rightly dismissed by Mr. Justice Newman by noting that, and this is where it will be relevant to Mr. Justice Ayer's conclusion that the terms of the notice should reflect or can be varied to reflect best practicable means. The local authority's duty is to issue the notice, but the effect of the notice is not dictated by their duty, but the terms of the Act, the appeal regulations and the availability of a ground of appeal.
So, where are you reading from?
At 413.
Yeah.
The two paragraphs which are under the indented quotation of form of the Act. But the reason I take the court to the judgment itself, beyond, although I hadn't observed it, the enjoyable opening paragraph of the judgment, is at 414. I think a useful consideration of, well, and it's also actually the preceding paragraph from 413, but I say 413, is the role and the reasoning for best practicable means within the 1990 Act. I'm reading from the, starting at the second sentence of the first paragraph on 414. The Act introduced statutory noise controls and gave power to local authorities to act as to reduce noise level. However, in my judgment, it's important to remember the distinctive legal actions or processes available in connection with the law of nuisance. There are distinct aspects of law of nuisance, private, public and now, as one sees in this Act, statutory nuisance. Proof of private or public nuisance will generally lead to the succession, cessation of the nuisance, but the provisions of the 1990 Act are penal. They give rise to criminal proceedings in the event of a notice not being complied with. They affect the way in which a permitted lawful business is being carried on. Parliament plainly thought it right to give the operator of a business the benefit of the principle of best practicable means. Otherwise, in my judgment, it would be obvious that great hardship could be caused to businesses with the threat of penal consequences in summary proceedings in the magistrate's court. And the reason I highlight that and analysis and agree with it is when coming to consider whether, as Mr. Justice Ayer did, there is a need for a power of variation to reflect what Mr. Justice Ayer calls the balancing, and I'll return to whether that term is correct, the balancing between the public and business owners. The appellant's submission is, well, Parliament envisaged that and addressed that through the provision of best practicable means, either as a ground of appeal or a defence in those limited circumstances. So, the Act already reflects without the power of variation, the practicalities which Mr. Justice Ayer was drawing the power of variation from and the protections. And that comes from best practicable means. Just perhaps then moving forward to, in relation to the case law that looks at and examines best practicable means. Just because my learned friend makes this submission that, in fact, a notice can or should reflect best practicable means in its drafting, and makes the mission that perhaps even where best practicable means exist, the council should not issue a notice under their duty. It is relevant to Mr. Justice Wynn Williams' judgment in Grantham Magistrates Court, the Grantham Magistrates Court case, sorry, I should say, rather than sitting in Grantham Magistrates Court, where our concern was that the court...
Tab.
It is at tab...
Pardon two, presumably. Thirty-four.
Yes, thirty-four.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
And if I may take the court to six forty-four, six hundred and forty-four in the Authorities' Bundle. Paragraph eighteen. And I'll just summarise before going to some passages. In effect, Mr. Justice Wynn Williams is saying, there are two separate questions, whether a statutory nuisance exists and whether a best practicable means defence arises. And if a statutory nuisance doesn't exist, well, then there is no need to consider whether there's a best practicable means defence. In Grantham, the concern was, in effect, that the court had found that there was no nuisance because there were best practicable means. And it is just reinforcing at paragraph eighteen and nineteen that distinction. And that distinction is relevant for supporting why a local authority should not, when they're issuing a notice, be setting out on it best practicable means. The notice is concerned with the existence of a statutory nuisance, and they are separate issues. And the point is perhaps particularly clearly put at nineteen. It does seem to me, however, that the magistrates may well have conflated the issue of whether or not a nuisance existed with the statutory defence. Upon analysis of the penultimate paragraph of Mrs. Galson's letter, it seems central to the magistrate's reasoning that because no nuisance existed on May seventeen, therefore, the steps taken by interested parties on September twenty were the best practicable means to prevent the nuisance. It does not seem to me that follows at all. Miss Galton's evidence was that there was no nuisance. The issue of proving the statutory defence simply does not arise. And then in my skeleton, I cite Manley, that, sorry, I should say, the 2007 version of Manley, the same issue with Huskies, returns to the court in 2007 on different matters. I don't need to take the court to Manley beyond the extract in my skeleton, which is reiterating that it's not for the local authority.
So, that had passed me by. Manley comes back.
Manley two.
Manley two in 2007. I'm at paragraph thirty of my skeleton.
And I note on the front page that the Lord Justice Moses was...
So, I turn to see the first paragraph.
Yeah. Very dull. The dogs unfortunately make a noise, I mean, you know. Compared to the first paragraph of the previous version, I mean, you know, with great respect to Lord Justice Moses, that's rubbish.
You would have thought he would have put in a...
Anyway, yeah. So, tab thirty-two is Manley, part two, and is there a particular bit?
Well, it's eleven and twelve of Manley, part two, the Authorities' Bundle, six twelve, which is reiterating that it's not for the local authority to, as it were, suggest or identify best practicable means. The burden is on the appellant to demonstrate at the time the notice the best practicable means were in use. And in the world of the court, it does not avail the appellant to complain the suggestions advanced by the local authority when practical, the boot was on quite the other foot. It was for her to demonstrate that she was doing something and that those were best practicable means.
It's all part of the criminal process.
Yeah, but it's reinforcing again that it's not part of the local authority's duty or role to identify or ascertain best practicable means. Their role is to issue the notice and to issue it to control a statutory nuisance. It's a point, again, reiterated in Chukesbury versus Deacon, paragraph thirty-one in my skeleton. And I don't intend to go to it beyond the extract in my skeleton at thirty-one, which is, in fact, the court, the rationale for that being, again, I've underlined it in the extract of my skeleton, that it's not the duty of the local authority as guardians of the Environmental Protection Act within its area to advise individuals or to assist them in reducing noise or giving them advice. But it's also that the rationale for that comes from Lord Justice Simon Brown in Falmer. And unless the court will wish me to, I don't intend at this point in time to go to Falmer.
Which... The reference to Chukesbury is which paragraph of your skeleton?
Is paragraph thirty-one of my skeleton.
And that's tab, you don't need to go to it, but just for my note?
That is...
Thirty.
Thirty.
That's tab thirty, so you rely on the extract in your skeleton?
Yes.
Yeah.
And in the extract in my skeleton, the court is... And, and, and in the extract in my skeleton, the court is quoting from Lord Justice Simon Brown in the Court of Appeal case of Falmouth.
That's time twenty-eight, uh, six, isn't it?
Uh, that is tab twenty-six. And it is-
And that's the one about not getting involved in-
Yes.
Technical-
Technical and scientific debate.
Debate.
Yes, yes, my lord. So if I may pause, pause there, just to make a few submissions, following that analysis. We've reached the point, we will then go on to consider the power to withdraw, but, but that is the analysis of the statutory nuisance framework.
Yeah.
The first is, um-
These are your submissions on the framework?
Yes.
Yeah.
The first submission is that analysis and case law as to best practicable means addresses the example given by my learned friend at paragraph forty-one-one of when a power of variation may be appropriate, which is in effect to, to reflect that best practicable means may have changed. And the response to that is, and this is also a point reflected in Mr Justice Ayers' judgment, it is not for a notice or the steps of a notice to set out best practicable means. Nor is it for the local authority to consider as part of their statutory duty whether best practicable means arises or not, because it's a mandatory duty to issue the notice. And they, i- if a statutory nuisance exists, and even if best practicable means exist, even if the local authority concludes best practicable means likely exists, that doesn't provide an opt-out, because best practicable means does not mean there's no nuisance. So this court should not equate any power of variation to the need to update or reflect a notice to reflect the changing best practicable means. They are two separate concepts. And that's in response to my learned friend's skeleton at forty-one-one, a- and also in part in response to Mr Justice Ayers' reasoning for why a power of variation should be implied in. The second submission, at this stage, having carried out that review of the regime, is that it is a detailed and specific code for dealing with statutory nuisances. It sets out what a statutory nuisance is at section seventy-nine. It sets out what a local authority must do under section eighty, as well as the powers of enforcement in terms of prosecution, direct action, injunction. It sets out how a, a notice can be appealed, and the appeal regulations, the statutory instrument which forms part of the statutory regime, explains the grounds that are open on appeal and the powers that a magistrate's court have. So it is a detailed and specific code, and that will come in to relate to whether there is space for a necessary implication to be made, drawing partly on Colunga, partly on Pifzel, a- a- and all, on, on, on those two cases. If I may, may turn then to address the power to withdraw, and, and turn here to address uh, the case of Everett. Everett, um, the High Court, um, judgment is found at tab twenty. Everett concerned a steep staircase, uh, uh, and whether a steep staircase could be a statutory nuisance legally. If it could be a statutory nuisance legally, whether the council were irrational in finding in fact that it wasn't a statutory nuisance. That's issue two. And thirdly, whether in the context, i- i- in that context, the local authority could withdraw, uh, uh, I should say, have the power to withdraw. There's not a suggestion that it was a duty, a power to withdraw a notice in those circumstances. And a, a key factual element at the time of the hearing is that the council had been clear that they no longer considered that the staircase, even if it legally could be a statutory nuisance, they no longer considered that in fact it was, that was their stance. And Mr Justice Richards examined the lawfulness of that conclusion as part of hi- his findings on issue two, and he found that to be lawful. He struggled with it, but he found it to be lawful on the basis of it not being irrational. So, so issue one, Mr Justice Richards concluded that in fact a steep staircase could not be, it fell outside of, it was not a statutory nuisance. Issue two was in the alternative, which is, well, if it could be a statutory nuisance, were the council entitled to conclude that it wasn't? Mr Justice Richards found that they were entitled to do that on the basis of irrationality. And then issue three was consideration of whether the council had the power to withdraw. And if I may take the court to where issue three begins, which is at page three fourteen of the authorities' bundle.
Yeah.
And issue three, between D and E, is, i- i- is where, in effect, it's addressing, well, 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 given, in fact, it's not a valid notice, given a staircase can't be a statutory nuisance, was there any argument that it can be withdrawn in those circumstances? And, and, and there was no argument there in relation to. Issue one has found that the notice is in effect annulity, it can't bite against a steep staircase, a- a- and there was no argument at all, or it was accepted by all parties that a notice can be withdrawn in those circumstances, in effect where the notice is annulity. Between E and F, the judge says though, again, however, I think it's right to consider what the position would be if I were wrong on the first issue. And that needs to be read in the findings of Mr Justice Richards on the second issue, which is that the factual circumstances the court is considering a power of withdrawal is where the notice is not annulity, but the council have concluded that no statutory nuisance exists. And it was on that basis that the court were looking at the circumstances of wha- of whether it would be to necessarily imply a power of withdrawal. A- a- and the reason I emphasise that element is Mr Justice Ayer conceded on the basis that the court were considering the power of withdrawal where there is still a presence of a nuisance. And that is not what the court were doing. The court were examining it in the limited circumstances where a local authority has concluded not just, in fact, that no statutory nuisance exists, but that it, i- it can't reoccur or occur again. I- i- it has come to the conclusion which, in fact, might be, might be quite a difficult conclusion for any local authority to reach, but that it will never, ever happen, and whether they can withdraw on that basis. And the court found that, that in those circumstances, where there is no longer a statutory nuisance, there was an implied power of withdrawal. The points that Mr Justice Richards placed emphasis on in, in his judgment as to why that power existed was that it would be senseless, well, first of all, that, that it would be-
This is the middle paragraph on three one five, is it?
Yes. Firstly, that, that, that without the power of withdrawal, the enforcement provisions would be unduly rigid. It would be senseless, an authority would be unable to withdraw an abatement notice which, for whatever reason, it no longer considers to be appropriate. And just pausing there, the appellant makes the submission that, 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 that context of no longer appropriate can only mean that there is no statutory nuisance. And no, a statutory nuisance is not likely to occur or reoccur. It is not intended to say that where a statutory nuisance is continuing or exists, a local authority have the power to withdraw bilaterally and ju- and just leave as it were the statutory nuisance unadressed. The second element that Mr Justice Richards placed emphasis on is that in terms of being in breach of criminal law, it would be particularly unsatisfactory. The recipient of the notice should remain subject to it. By reason of the failure to comply, it would remain in breach of criminal law where the local authority does not consider a notice to be appropriate. Again, I ask the court to read, not appropriate must mean where there's no statutory nuisance. And has no intention of bringing a prosecution for breach of it, and then finding that it was consistent with and serves to promote, rather than undermine the legislative scheme.
So if I, why, why do you say one couldn't, uh, uh, replace the word withdraw with the word vary in that paragraph?
Yes.
To the same effect?
A, 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 a number of reasons, but, but, but starting perhaps with why I place emphasis on what appropriate means, which is there's no statutory nuisance. Where there is a power of withdrawal in these cases, it's being made because the local authority has been able to conclude not just that a statutory nuisance doesn't exist, but it will never occur or reoccur. That's accordance with their, their duty under section eighty. The power of variation, keeping the notice in place but varying it, is, is doing so where, in effect, by the fact the notice remains in place, a statutory nuisance is continuing to exist in some sort. And that is a material difference from the reason why a local authority can withdraw and why, in fact, the local authority can choose to, in this case, on application from the appellant, potentially water down or change this existing nuisance which needs to be protected, or sorry, I should say, which the public need to be protected by. The ramifications of that difference, if I may, my lord, I, I will explore through the submissions I'll go on to make in terms of both how it sits with the law of statutory nuisance, and also how it sits with the practical and legal implications of if a local authority can simply change a notice without withdrawing and reissuing.
So the primary basis of Mr Justice, the reasoning of Mr Justice Richards as he then was, is, um, one sees from, um, D to E on page three hundred and fourteen. He decided that the notice was an annulity, and, um, that the claimant's counsel didn't dispute that if the notice was an annulity, then it could be withdrawn. That's the primary basis of his reasoning. He says that decides issue three. So what, what follows is obiter?
I- i- it is obiter, it i- it is deal, i- i- it is detail, I mean, it is obiter, yes. It is detailed and reasoned obiter judgment there, um, vaguely, but yes.
You're trying to say it's persuasive, but it's not, I mean, it's not binding in any event, but, um, it's not the primary basis.
Yes.
So the argument, the point at, at, um, three one five, that in the absence of an apply of power to draw a bit of notice, the enforcement provisions would, in my view, be unduly rigid. Would the proposition of replacing the word withdraw with vary, that wouldn't, you say that wouldn't, that doesn't hold, it would not be unduly rigid?
Uh, yes, my lord. I, I, I can address that point now, the, the, the reason being that, so this is in a context, these, these obiter, um, um, findings are in a context where a local authority has concluded, again, perhaps surprisingly, but there will never be a statutory nuisance for them to prosecute in relation to. It, it is senseless for them, therefore, to, to, to be, be stuck with the notice and, and, and they can withdraw it. The difference of the power of variation is, while there a statutory nuisance is continuing to exist, i- i- if the statutory nuisance stops, well then there's the power of withdrawal, they're not senselessly stuck with that. The logic must be that in effect, the power of variation allows for a local authority to be constantly updating the terms of the notice seemingly to meet the factual circumstances as they change. My learned friend gives some examples perhaps of that, where there is a change completely in the operation of the business, it expands so much. But, 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 but the appellant's point on that is, with the limited power of withdrawal that's here, are, are the local authorities stuck with the terms of that notice? No, they have the ability to reissue a new notice. I don't think there's a dispute that a local authority can issue again.
Withdrawing the previous one?
It, it, they, yes. It, it's unclear, if I may say, it's un- it's unclear whether, so there is a power, I think, from section twelve of the Interpretation Act, for the local authority to issue another notice if the facts change so much as to effectively render the old notice outdated. There is a, a, a question I accept, well, where does that leave the old notice? You do have the case where, in effect, old notices are just treated as defunct. An example of that is actually in this case. There was a nineteen eighty-five notice which bit against a, an old operator. The twenty fourteen notice came out, I don't believe the nineteen eighty-five notice was ever withdrawn, it was just viewed to be defunct. But I, 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 I do not resist the proposition that where a local authority feels the need to reissue and update a notice, and they have done so, that, that, that they can withdraw the old notice. There is the, that seems to be the appropriate option. The question may be, well, why are you forcing them to do in two steps what they could do in one? Well, the, the reasoning for that is the control within the statutory nuisance regime. If a local authority varies a notice, there's no right of appeal in relation to it. It, it's unclear even as to the procedure of, of, of what goes about in terms of what they can consider, how significant a variation they can make. If the circumstances have changed so much as to render in effect the old notice overtaken or, or outdated, then, then it seems appropriate to withdraw and reissue a new notice rather than attempt to tinker and change the notice that's existing. That's in line with the intention of Parliament, the appellant would say, that's in line with the way in which the statutory nuisance regime is meant to work. The alternative causes significant difficulties, which I will come on to address. And, and therefore, to return to my lordship's question, that is why, if there is that power to withdraw, it's not unduly rigid in relation to also saying, well, there needs to be a power to vary.
But I mean, it's a matter of logic. The fact that, um, Mr Justice Richards found on these facts, i.e. where the original notice was an annulity, that there was a power to withdraw it, um, doesn't in any way entail a conclusion that there's a power to vary, because they have two totally different powers.
If I may turn then to the submissions, and I hope, given the, the, the time which I've taken to go through the provisions, I'll be able to, to deal with them before lunch. The, there are, are three grounds to this appeal. The first of which, as I said, is the, the learned judge was wrong to find that Everett was not distinguishable, um, and his lordship at paragraph fifty-nine of his judgment, and the, the judgment is to be found, which I'll be making reference to in the core bundle, starting at page forty-seven.
Yeah.
And, and his lordship at paragraph fifty-nine, on page sixty of the core bundle, set out really the, the two ways in which he should consider or approach the question of whether Everett should be distinguished. A, whether there's rational basis on which to say the considerations which cause Everett to conclude a power to withdraw implied do not also apply to a power to vary. And then B, whether there are any additional factors. And I wish to adopt the structure of my submissions as to why both judge was wrong to find that A, the factors did apply equally and B, that there were not additional factors that relate only to a power of variation. In my skeleton thirty-eight to forty-one, I, I, I address simply the point which I, I've noted, which is the context in which Mr Justice Richards' findings were, it was in effect the notice was a nullity. And even his obiter comments of the notice was not a nullity, there was no statutory nuisance. And that is a material difference where an abatement notice is being left in place but is being varied and changed. Turning to the factors I've, I've, I've dealt with and I'm at paragraph forty-four of my skeleton. This is in response to your lordship's questions about why the undue rigidity point would no longer apply. Well, given there is this limited power of withdrawal, it's not the case that a local authority would be senselessly stuck with a notice. The second factor was that the lack of a power of withdrawal be inconsistent with the local authority's discretion to prosecute. And, and, and if I may take the court to paragraph sixty-three of his lordship's judgment. This was a factor which his lordship placed significant or considerable weight on.
Which paragraph again, I'm sorry?
Sixty-three on core bundle page sixty-one. It's apparent that Mr Justice Richards as he then was was particularly influenced by the fact that a local authority has a discretion as to whether or not to prosecute for non-complants and abatement notice. He concluded it was inconsistent with the existence of the discretion for there not to be a power to withdraw the notice. The same considerations apply and arguably does so with greater force to the question of a power to vary the notice. Thus, it would be open for a local authority to conclude that the steps being taken by a business which was subject to an abatement notice amounted to best practicable, um, means to counteract the effects of the nuisance for the purpose of eighty, uh, section eighty subsection seventy. In those circumstances, a decision not to prosecute would be unimpeachable. It would also be senseless to adopt Mr Justice Richards' term. The authority cannot in those circumstances vary the notice as to make it clear that the activity in question was permissible, providing that the counteracting, counteracting actions continue. And this is where the, the appellant says with the greatest of respect to his lordship, the terms of a notice, the drafting of a notice, should not be equated with the internal conclusions of a local authority as to whether to prosecute. That, the appellant says, cannot be right.
So you say that's making the same mistake as in that earlier case of muddling together the two things?
Yes, partly, my lord. It, 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 it's also perhaps to go, um, well, the, 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 the scope and the drafting of a notice is set out by section eighty subsection one A and B. A notice requires a nuisance to be abated and it sets out the steps or the works necessary for that purpose. That is different to steps that, or breaches that a local authority may be willing to prosecute against. There may be a plethora of reasons why a local authority would not want to prosecute or, or, or would consider whether or not to prosecute in terms of the full code test, the evidence that they have, the, the, the public interest. The effect of the notice is wider than simply what a local authority at the time would be willing to prosecute. And if I may illustrate the difficulties that would cause if it were right that a local authority had a power to, or should be justified in a variation power by the fact they have to update a notice to reflect their internal conclusions as to prosecution. Firstly, that may be an ever-changing view, these notices last indefinitely. It could lead to a fact of a local authority having to constantly update its views as to what warrants a prosecution. Secondly, it, 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 it doesn't address the fact that of course a power of prosecution rests not just with the local authority, but also with a, a private prosecution can be brought by a third party. And so in fact, the local authority alone and not the arbiters of when to bring a prosecution and to update the steps that way. And, and, and that is where, my lord, I, I, the, the, the ICO, the, the judgment of Mr, uh, 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 of Judge Foss, the judgment that, that, that the court indicated they'd read. I don't draw any direct reliance on that, but I, I do just make a contextual point which I think supports this on the facts of this case. Which is what that judgment concerned was the existence that the respondent has of an internal document as to when they will prosecute a breach of this particular notice. And in effect, and I can take the court to it, the policy at the time of the respondent was, because of what they called, I think, the uncertainty principle, they wouldn't prosecute a breach of the decibel levels on the notice unless it went beyond a three dB exceedance. I can take the court to this at, at any time if it would assist where this is set out.
What, what, what do you get from that?
The, the, the point is by Mr Justice Ayer's logic, that internal conclusion of this authority that they won't in fact prosecute unless there is an over three dB exceedance of the steps on the notice would require or should, the local authority should therefore amend the steps or vary the steps on the notice to reflect their current conclusion that they won't prosecute unless in fact there's an additional three dB on it. That's not something the appellant would say is correct, that's not something the appellant would say the respondent should be required to do. Replace a significant burden on local authorities with ever-changing internal conclusions as to when to prosecute, to be shifting and changing the terms of an abatement notice, which is meant to be clear and ambiguous, carries criminal sanctions, allows for a local authority to take direct action. So it, it's just a context point which illustrates the, the, the difficulty the appellant has with equating. That is of course not the same with the power of withdrawal where there is no statutory nuisance.
Mr Riley Smith, may I just ask you a question please? Paragraph fifty-seven of the judgment. The first sentence records a concession by you that if Everett couldn't be distinguished, it was binding authority in favour of the defendant. So did you accept in front of the judge that a power to withdraw and a power to vary were the same thing?
Uh, no, I, 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 I accepted that, um, uh, Mr Justice Ayer couldn't, unless he could distinguish it, um, um, move beyond Everett. Sorry. I, I didn't, I didn't accept that the same points applied, in fact, I argued they didn't. I think Mr Justice Ayer asked me to argue whether Everett was a curiam or was.
No, but what you recorded as having accepted was that if it couldn't be distinguished, it was binding authority in favour of the defendant. What, that suggests that you accepted that it would entitle the defendant to vary the notice. I'm, I'm just trying to understand whether that, the record of that concession is accurate.
My, my recollection is not that it
Because what that appears to suggest is that by implication at any rate, you were accepting that a power, if there was a power to withdraw, then there was a power to vary.
That was certainly not, not what I was accepting, I, I
Right, so that's it, so that sentence is inaccurate if it implies that?
If it implies that, yeah, I'm, I'm certainly, it, my apologies if Mr Justice Ayer took that, but I, I don't believe he did, I
I mean, it's quite confusing with respect to the judge, it's a little ambiguous, isn't it? It could, it, it could be read as meaning that if the effect of Everett was that a power to withdraw and a power to vary were indistinguishable. And it was binding.
Because he then goes on, this is, this is why I'm confused, he then goes on to recall that your contention was that withdrawal and variation materially different. So I'm, I'm just very confused by. So, so, so you say your submission was recorded accurately in the second sentence?
Yes.
Okay.
So my lords, my lady, I'm addressing the second factor, which is the, the equation of prosecution with the steps on a notice and that being used as a justification for implying in variation and finding that the factor in Everett applied equally to the power of variation. I do say that can be distinguished for the, the reasons I've set out. And perhaps if I may just therefore take up my skeleton moving on at paragraph
Good, just on, on sixty-three. You've, you've been asked a number of questions about whether, well, substitute withdrawal for vary. In one sense sixty-three goes the other way. All of that could be said to explain why it would be a good idea to issue a new notice. Rather than vary. I mean, what I don't quite understand is what is it about sixty-three that says you should vary as opposed to issue a new notice?
Well, my lord, I, I, I imagine that sixty-three is equating the fact that a notice should reflect best practicable means. And I, I don't think that should support either with
Well, I, that I accept, sorry. That was the point I put to you before and I understand that. But let's park that point for a moment. This is all about variation. And, and, I mean, this seems to be suggesting, well, the, the, you, in these circumstances, you could vary. But equally, in these circumstances, you could issue a fresh notice.
Yes.
You could always do that, couldn't you?
You, you could al, it's never been
Your point is going to be that that brings with it all, all sorts of practical consequences.
Scrutiny, rights of appeal.
We'll come on to in due course.
Which, which will come on to in, in, in due course.
Wouldn't arise under vary.
Which wouldn't arise under varying.
Okay. All right, so that's, that's the second one.
The second factor.
And then the third
Factor is purpose of the act and I'm, I'm at paragraph fifty-three of my skeleton.
And the point is in fact it's the opposite. The point is the purpose is better achieved if there isn't a power to vary than if there is.
Yes, and, yes, and, and
Get for the same reason.
For the same reason, but, but I think it is, it is appropriate to, to address Mr Justice Ayer's conclusions on what the purpose of the act was. And whether I, sorry, whether the appellant agrees or disagrees with them and then how that filters through.
Yeah, okay, so, so this is the third one and he said?
He said it's paragraph forty of the judgment, of core bundle page fifty-six. In light of those matters, I do not accept Mr Riley Smith's characterization of the act as operating in absolutes. The purpose of the act is indeed to protect members of the public from statutory nuisance, but that purpose is to be achieved against the background of a recognition of matters of practicality in the interests of others. The purpose cannot be said that local authorities are to draw a balance between competing interests because the primary thrust of the act is clearly the prevention and removal of statutory nuisances. To that extent, there's a balancing exercise, the scales start off weighted in favour of enforcement. Whether that primary thrust is not unqualified and the balance can change. The purpose of the act is to provide for the removal of statutory nuisances, but for that to be done in a way which takes account of the existence of other factors, including the fact that total removal may not be practicable and the best practicable means. If I may separate that out just briefly and, and address elements that I agree with and elements where maybe with respect I disagree with Mr Justice Ayer. I accept and agree that the purpose of the act is to protect members of the public from statutory nuisance. I accept, or, or I don't dispute that, the, the characterization that the primary thrust is the prevention, is the prevention and removal of statutory nuisance. But perhaps where I, I with respect disagree slightly with his lordship is where he, he talks about the reference to a balancing exercise. A balancing exercise, I don't believe is quite right to describe the local authority's duty. The local authority's duty, if there's a statutory nuisance is to issue, there's no balancing to be done. Where the balancing, and, and I believe this is maybe highlighting where Mr Justice Ayer believed that a notice should reflect best practicable means. Where the balancing is done, and this is also where, again, I, I don't disagree with Mr Justice Ayer's recognition of practicality in the act. But this is where I, I perhaps explains the reference to Mr Justice Newman in Manly. Yes, the act does reflect practicality. And the, um, the, the removal of statutory nuisances is done in a way which takes account of the existence of other factors. But that is done by Parliament through the provision of best practicable means. Either as a ground of appeal or as a defence. That practicality is not, or should not be, or I should say that limited practicality should not be seen to stretch so far as to allow the council to be changing and updating and varying a notice as it goes along. That's not something which the act envisages. And so while I, I, I don't, I hope it's seen with respect, I, I, there are, uh, paragraph forty, I, I don't entirely disagree with, but there are elements of it and I think it goes on to explain his lordship's findings as to why there's a power of variation. In particular, it's this suggestion there is a balancing exercise that is done by local authority, it's much more clear. There's a statutory nuisance than they issue the notice. Yes, they have a discretion to prosecute, but we're concerned
Well, if we look at the notice in this case, the original notice, isn't there some element of balancing there? And then looking at the restrictions of when the circuit could be used. Doesn't, doesn't that involve a, a balance?
I, I, I can give without wanting to argue whether or not this notice, I, I can give the legal answer of what these steps should be doing. Um, the answer is, they shouldn't be balancing, they should be what are necessary to achieve the purposes of abating the nuisance. That's the power to impose steps at section eighty subsection one B. So the balancing has only gone in into the local authority saying, if you follow these things, the, the, these requirements, a nuisance will not occur.
But again, it's nothing to do with variation.
No.
Because this, this applies equally for issuing a fresh notice if the circumstances have changed.
Yes. And one element of, of, of the purpose of the act, and, and, and I should address this also, is, is a point on certainty. And, and, and this is in reference to his lordship's findings at, at sixty-four. Paragraph sixty-four, please. The, the, the argument that the appellant ran at the High Court and runs now is that, is, is that the power of variation undermines that ability for certainty. Mr Justice Ayer noted, however, is, Mr Riley Smith placed great emphasis on the need for certainty. However, as the examples I've just given indicate, variation of an abatement notice can operate to promote certainty rather than impair it. A variation can operate to formalize and publicize the approach which a local authority is taking as a matter of its discretion. The position may be that an authority has decided not to prosecute in certain circumstances. But in the absence of a variation, it may be uncertain how long the approach will continue.
Where does that, where does all that come from? A variation can operate to formalize and publicize the approach which a local authority is taking as a matter of its discretion.
If I, if I may explain why, where I think Mr, I disagree with where Mr Justice Ayer drew it from. He drew it from the starting point, which is Mr Justice Richards found that the reason for withdrawal is that a local authority, if they have no intention to prosecute, should withdraw. That was a factor in which he said. Mr Justice Ayer then went on, as I've discussed, to find that that equates also to where there's best practicable means. And a local authority should publicize and show that if they've considered that they're not going to prosecute the steps, they should vary the steps. And that is what I believe leads his lordship to say, well, therefore, if a local authority concludes they would not prosecute a particular step, they should be entitled to vary it. The, the appellant disagrees for, for a number of reasons with that. Does that assist, my lord, in where I believe?
Yeah, just let me make an addition there.
And if I may, I've said the first factor in sixty-four, and I'll address that first. So one factor, why Mr. Justice Ayer said, well, variations, it promotes certainty, because it makes clear... Can I address why that is wrong? As I've already touched upon, that relates to the requirement for a local authority to be updating according to its discretion. And I would say that is actually pushing certainty too far into a sense where it is no longer certain. The terms of the notice will be having to be changed or can be changed according to, maybe it doesn't sound flippant, but does it were the whim of a local authority, if they've concluded whether or not to prosecute. Also, in terms of this proposition, which is variation actually supports, promotes certainty, an example of why that's not the case is actually in this decision, and it's the review mechanism I referred to at the start of my submissions. This variation, purported variation, added in a yearly review mechanism that by the thirtieth of November, the local authority would inform the operator if the variation was continuing. That shows the uncertainty that's been promoted by even an operator who wishes to operate in terms of the terms of a notice and whether they're breaching a criminal offence. So actually, and this is perhaps where I rely on a term that was used in PIFs Elm, that actually the variation is inimical, inimicable to finality and certainty. That is a reference at Authority Bundle, page one thousand and fifty-five, the additional one. It is not creating certainty.
So what paragraph is...
Authority Bundle, page ten fifty-five, one thousand and fifty-five. Paragraph ninety-five.
Thank you.
"I do not agree with Judge Two's view, contrary to Judge Two's view, the availability of the disputed power is inimicable to finality, produces results which are just as cumbersome slow and expensive as the alternative."
Thank you.
Now, the reason why that same logic would not apply as it were here to a power of withdrawal and then to reissue is, as your lordship has noted, there, either a notice being withdrawn because there is no statutory nuisance at all, or if the local authority is wishing to completely alter the terms of it and the operation of it, or then it is starting again and allowing the parties to have input and to understand, it's starting the process that Parliament envisage, rather than effectively allowing this unlimited ability to change and alter and tinker with the terms of a notice. The appellant would say that is contrary to the certainty that is, at least in part, reflected in the nineteen ninety Act. Those are the appellant's submissions on Factors A, which are why the factors that led the court to obit a conclusion in Everett don't apply to the power of variation. If I may move on to, and I do have a...
Additional factors.
The additional factors, and I do have an eye on the time as well. This is at paragraph fifty-nine of my skeleton. And the first additional factor is, unlike a power of withdrawal, the legislation does, or I should say, the statutory scheme, because it comes, I appreciate, through the statutory instrument, provide a limited power of variation. It provides it in, it, my apologies for the word, whittles it down, it limits it in three ways. It limits it only on appeal made within twenty-one days, so there's a time limitation to it. It limits it only to the appellant's favour. It limits it to the magistrate's court, rather than the local authority. And the fourth, and this is where attention arises, the statutory instrument makes clear that a once varied a notice is final, so it seems to be a one-time variation. And that is a relevant factor unlike withdrawal, that the effect of his lordship's judgment is to extend that power given on appeal to the magistrates quite significantly to, it gives the appellant an unlimited ground of appeal in effect to the council. They are able to constantly ask for the notice to be varied in their favour. And if I may here link, and this is my supplementary skeleton argument, and point two in my supplementary skeleton argument, which is, starts at paragraph...
No, 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 I just had a bad moment. No, no.
Summary skeleton, point two, the relevance of a limited power of variation. The central point is that Parliament were aware of this power, and they gave it to the magistrates in limited circumstances, and that counts against it being implied in by necessary implication. A similar point was in Colonga. I do, I must say, I do accept or note, in Colonga, I believe, the power was within the primary act. It was given in an earlier subset, in an earlier section of the primary act in certain circumstances, but not in that, and those provisions closely followed on. But I say that the same principle applies here, which is that Parliament has chosen to give the power in certain circumstances. It was a known technique, it was available, but they chose nonetheless not to give it in these circumstances. And this is where, if I may, I link back to the extract in NYKK about it being easy enough, it would have been easy enough for the nineteen ninety Act to include a power of variation in favour of the appellant or otherwise, a general power of variation. It existed in some form, but they did not do so. And I say that is a fact, that it's a similar point also in PIFs Elm. Again, I appreciate that slightly different context, where sections twelve and section fourteen of the Interpretation Act were being relied upon to imply in a power. But what the Court of Appeal found in PIFs Elm is that section fourteen applies in a power to amend in certain scenarios, which don't apply here. Section twelve, which does, does not apply in a power to amend. And the appellant would say the ratio that's set out at paragraph one hundred of PIFs Elm, which is ten fifty-six, ten fifty-six to paragraph one hundred, applies equally here for the power to vary or amend. That sections twelve and fourteen are an exhaustive statement of the circumstances in which Parliament has conferred and implied power to revoke, here the appellant would say amend, in an earlier exercise of a function. The provisions are clear as to when a rulemaking power is confirmed, and absent a contrary intention, Parliament by implication confers a power to as in... But I won't read the whole paragraph out, but the logic there draws together, and this is summarized at paragraph nine in my supplementary skeleton. The appellant submits Parliament were aware that a limited power existed on appeal, and aware the power would not be implied in through the operation of section twelve and fourteen, and in that knowledge, they did not include a power into the nineteen ninety Act, and that counts against such a power being implied in by necessary implication. That was a point that his lordship does deal with briefly at paragraph sixty-seven of his judgment. It's Call Bundle, page sixty-two. He notes, and this is the third line from the bottom of sixty-two. "I'm not persuaded by this argument that power to vary in abatement notice in the particular circumstances of an appeal and as part of provisions governing appeal is directed at those particular circumstances, and is not to be seen as an indication as to whether or not there should or should not be an implication of a similar power to be exercised in very different circumstances which apply once an abatement notice is enforced." I do just respectfully make the submission that his lordship should have, the fact that they're given in different circumstances and limited circumstances is relevant. It is a controlled power given in those limited circumstances, on an appeal within twenty-one days to the magistrate's court, and that is an indication, or it would be, no, no, I do say it's an indication, and it would undermine it if Parliament also intended, despite that specific controlled power, a wider general power existed at any time for the local authority.
Does this argument work? The power to vary, which is conferred on the magistrates by the regulations, isn't in the primary legislation? Because how are you able to submit that Parliament was aware of this technique?
Yes, my lady.
Which is available from regulations that were made after the statute was enacted?
So it is, well, the answer is the fact that the power existed, so the direct answer is that it existed in the regulations which applied to the forerunner legislation. It's the, my apologies, the footnote that in my original skeleton, that the power to vary existed in the Control of Noise Pollution nineteen seventy five appeals.
But that's a long sector, isn't it? Because it doesn't follow from the fact that there's an existing power in regulations made under an early statute, earlier statute, that it'll be exercised? Or are you simply saying that Parliament is to be taken to have been aware of the fact that this power was in the previous regulations, and so Parliament knew that that was a power that could be conferred?
It was aware of the fact that, and the nineteen ninety Act was effectively wholesale taking the control of noise pollution, the provisions, section fifty-eight become effectively section eighty. They were aware of the fact that, one, that didn't have an express power of variation on local authorities; two, that the role of power of variation played was under the appeal regulations given to the magistrate's court in a limited way. So they had knowledge that that power existed, I do say, and it would have been open to them on reviewing and consolidating, as they did in the nineteen ninety Act, and I can, if need be, I can give what Parliament was doing with the nineteen ninety Act. They had the opportunity to say, well, actually, that limited power that's there on appeal that currently comes through a statutory instrument, well, that could be a good idea to actually broaden or incorporate or place.
Yes, I see the way you put it.
Yes, thank you. But, my lady, I do, and I hope I don't push too far on the point, I do recognize, for example, in Colonga, it was a primary and the provisions ran on from each other.
Yes, you may.
But I don't say that negates the point, the fact this comes from a statutory instrument.
All right.
It was also in the nineteen ninety statutory instrument that accompanied the, came out the Act.
Can I just, the, in your list of distinguishing features about the magistrate's power to vary, you alighted at the end on the fact that, once the varying power had been exercised by the magistrate, that created a final order. That's what it says.
Yes.
What, how does that assist your argument?
Well, it assists my argument, and this second element I was coming on to, is the practical and legal issues that arise if the courts by necessary implication bring in a power to vary. Is it the case that the power to vary applies where a notice is not appealed and varied, but doesn't apply where a notice that's been varied once by the magistrate's court is final and so cannot be varied again? It creates this further uncertainty and shows why, in effect, perhaps I'll come to it now, there are two sections of submissions as to why, by necessary implication, a power to vary creates a significant amount of legal and practical problems, and that can be used to support why it should not be necessarily implied. The two subsections I wish to deal with is, one, the legal test. If there is a power to vary, what are the limits of that power or the test to be applied? There is no clue in the statutory context of the Environmental Protection Act nineteen ninety, and the reason I make that point is in PIFs Elm, at page ten fifty. No, sorry, that's a mis...
You'd better give us my numbering different, so you'd better just give us the paragraph.
Paragraph, paragraph one hundred and three. This was a point that the Court of Appeal relied upon in supporting why a power should not be necessarily implied. It's assumed, and sorry, I'm reading from the third, well, Judge Two's focus on the ombudsman argument that there was an implied power to withdraw a report if he reasonably believed that it was flawed by legal error, and that she did not explore the ramifications of her decisions, the meaning of twelve. If it's assumed that section twelve does confer an implied power to revoke a decision or report, there's no clue in the language of section twelve or in the statutory context about the circumstances in which it could be exercised, or about the limits of any such power. Such power cannot therefore simply be limited to the circumstances for which the ombudsman argued. And just pausing there, I believe one issue in the case was the ombudsman had purported to set what it said was the legal test for when they can withdraw. Subject to the doctrine in Padfield, no obvious limit on those circumstances can be derived. The point should have given Judge Two pause. Moreover, as Judge Two's reasoning shows, the test for which the ombudsman advocated was a recipe for confusion and error. And then there's a point on legal flaw. So, my lords, my lady, the same point applies here. If there is a power of variation, well, who can apply for it? Is it just the respondent of the notice? Is it members of the public? Can the local authority do it of its own volition? All of that is unclear. What then is the test? What are the limits? Is it only a minor variation? If you can change the steps that carry criminal sanctions, or can you, well, if you can, can you change steps which carry criminal sanctions? Why could you not also, one requirement of the notice is the time limit. Are you able to vary a time limit on an abatement notice? Or, and this is a point perhaps I particularly says, start, although I think I know the answer, but can you vary the recipient, the person against which the notice bites? As I've set out, one of the requirements of the act is if the owner of the premises changes for a new notice to bite, a new notice must be served. Sorry, for a notice to bite, a new notice must be served against it. And while I return to this in ground three, if it's a power of variation, is it upwards and downwards? Is it only downwards? All of these questions are unanswered by the just simple necessary implication of a power of variation.
But they are answered in respect to the magistrate's power.
They are answered in respect to the magistrate's power. It can be in the appellant's favour, but yeah. Then, so issue, there's this, sub-issue one is the legal test. The next point then is, again, the practicalities, and I do make these points of paragraphs, well, within paragraphs of my skeleton. Putting aside the legal elements, the practical difficulties that a power of variation would do. What's required procedurally in terms of, for example, consultation? I did note that the local authority, the respondent in this instance, did consult with, or publicized, put the form out, consulted with residents, and issued a formal decision notice, but that was all of their own making, their decision to do all of that.
If they did all that, they could have issued a fresh notice.
Yes.
It didn't save them anything. And what if a local authority doesn't? Because we're dealing with the power, that's the point on field, not the particular fact.
Yes, so if a local authority, and these are the issues caused, only carries out limited consultation or no consultation, well, then the burden is on the residents, I assume, to judicially review that basis, on the basis that it was unfair in terms of consultation. The practical issues expand from there. The form, and this is touching on a point in my factual introduction, the form of this varied notice does, is a simple formal decision notice sufficient so as to require, in effect, the old notice to be read with the formal decision notice? Or should, in fact, the local authority be issuing an updated notice? Which, does that relate to new powers of appeal? And of course, it links... And of course, it links back to my lord's point on, well, what's the difference then if they're having to issue an updated notice to reflect the variations by simply issuing a new notice? Then, a particular point of difficulty is time limit. When a notice is issued for the first time, it sets the time limit for compliance, apart from in relation to the indefinite time limit to prevent the future recurrence of the notice. On this decision notice, there's no time limit in which effectively the operator has to bring their operations in line with the variation asked. Now, that may not be an issue because the operator has asked for them, they'll do them straight away. But it does show in looking at the general principle, what if it's varied to require an active step for the operator to do something? How long are they given to do it? If they think that time period is unfair, what remedy do they have against the new time period for complying with that varied step or condition? All of these issues arise where a notice is left in place but varied. They don't, of course, where a notice is withdrawn. Where a notice is withdrawn, then none of these issues are triggered by it. So, the appellant does say there are additional factors, really tied to the fact that the notice remains in place, that mean that apply to why a power of variation should not be necessarily implied in, that didn't apply with a power of withdrawal. Unless I can assist any further on the submissions as to that, which really effectively are my submissions on ground two, but there are just two points I'd like to briefly touch on under ground two. I'll move on to ground two and then end briefly on ground three.
The only point I've got arising out of your submissions in answer to a question from my lady, we've got the 1995 regulation.
Yes.
You said that there was a 1990 SI.
Yes.
Which accompanied the Act.
I want to be careful with my language, my lord, and thank you for picking me up on it. There was a 1990 SI. It did include a power of variation. The reason why I say I want to be, I don't want to mislead the Court in terms of accompanying, of whether they came out at the same time, or whether in effect the Act came in and the SI was laid before Parliament shortly thereafter. I just want to be careful that I don't suggest...
All right, well, we can work that out for ourselves if you provide us with a copy of the 1990 SI.
Yes.
It looks from our activity behind you that you may be able to do that over the shorter term.
I'm very grateful to have you sitting by me, I can address that point now.
Okay.
The environmental...
Hold my mic, it's my coloured notes.
The environmental, yes. The Environmental Protection Act came into force on the 1st of November 1990. The Statutory Nuisance Appeal Regulations 1990 came into force on the 13th of November 1990. It may be over lunch, I'll just check whether, when they were made and when they were laid and when they came into force, there may be some...
Well, rather than doing it in bits, why don't you do it? And it might be better if actually you just put them down on half a sheet of paper. But the regulations contained the power to vary.
Yes.
For the magistrate.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, right?
So, moving on to ground two, that the learned judge was wrong to find that if Everett was not binding, that a variation power would arise by necessary implication. His lordship deals with it briefly, but all the points he makes in relation to why Everett is not distinguishable flow on to why he says, well, even if it is, so all of my submissions apply to that. It's just really, under this ground, to reiterate two points. Firstly, it's to return and make sure sight is not lost of what the test for necessary implication is, which is it's for a power of variation to be necessarily implied, it must follow from the provisions of the 1990 Act in purpose and logic, and it's not something which is convenient to, if Parliament had thought about, they may have wanted to have done. And the appellant does not dispute that, of course, the power to vary a notice does, for certain parties, allow flexibility. It requires them to do in two steps rather than one, although, as your lordship has noted, in practice, in reality, there may not be a huge amount of difference between it. But that, the appellant does dispute, that practicality is enough to justify a power being read into the 1990 Act. And furthermore, then, and this is just picking up on point one in the supplementary skeleton, the appellant does characterise the statutory nuisance regime as detailed, a detailed and specific code for controlling statutory nuisances, and it does not contain an express provision of variation. That was a point in both Colonga and PIFSEL that supported the Court finding no power should be necessarily implied in. And it's just those two additional observations, or submissions, I should say, my apologies, under ground two, that really, when the test is considered in that light, the submissions on variation really all relate to practicality, rather than actually how they flow from the drafting of 1990, the context, or its purpose, or its content. Finally, in relation to ground three, the learned judge room, Mr Justice Eyre, the submission was made by the appellant and the Court below that because it was examining the general principle of law, the Court should not confine itself to just looking at whether a downwards variation should be made, i.e. a variation reducing the effect of notice. They should consider also whether an upwards variation should be made. His lordship declined to do so. He noted that different considerations may well apply, but he said they weren't for him to consider. And the appellant would say that the learned judge...
Which paragraph's that?
It's paragraph 16, it's in two places. Firstly, paragraph 16 on page 50.
So, he says it follows that I'm not concerned with the question of whether a local authority has power to vary an abatement notice so as to restrict activities formally permitted under such a notice? So, on your, is that upwards?
That's upwards, that is further restricting, further limiting the operations of, and I refer to that as upwards, a tightening, as it were.
Yeah, okay.
He goes on to note, different considerations may well apply in such a case from those which apply to variation which waters down or modifies. But he notes that's not for him to consider. It's a point he repeats at paragraph 69, on call bundle page 63. Five or six lines up from the bottom. "In those circumstances, I need not address the issue between the claim of the defendant as to whether the variation did or did not reduce the protections provided by the abatement notice. As already noted, different considerations may well apply to a variation which increased the restriction imposed by an abatement notice and the conclusion that it's lawful to make, such as here, does not necessarily apply to variation of that type." So, his lordship is recognising the different considerations, saying they don't. Now, your lordship has already noted, and it's one of my submissions, it's the third submission, that in fact the Court should consider this because they're looking at the general principle. And perhaps I need go no further than that as to why the Court should consider it. I do also set out why, even on the terms of the facts, I should say, of this case, the Court should consider it because the wording of the clause that was at the heart of this was for any variation, not an upwards or downwards. But I do say the Court should consider the general ramifications. And the different considerations that Mr Justice Eyre touches upon, the appellant would say, are the stark illustration of why a power of variation can't be necessarily implied, which is quite simply that if a local authority could vary a notice to further restrict an operator, they would be doing so entirely circumventing the rights of that operator to appeal against that. It would be clearly undermining the operation and the purpose of the regime. And the fact that, the appellant would say, it's almost, could almost say uncontroversial that a local authority shouldn't be able to vary a notice upwards. That fact equally applies as to, therefore, why there shouldn't be a one-sided power to vary it downwards. Instead, it endorses all the submissions made by the appellant that there should be no power of variation. And the Court therefore should consider it. If I may first just turn my back on the Court before then asking you if I can... Unless I can assist my lords or my lady any further, those...
No, that's very kind, Mr Ryan Smith, that's fine.
I hope I've kept the...
No, you have, yeah, absolutely. Mr Wiggle, I'm not going to hold you to the hour, but in the circumstances, shall we come back at two? Shall we be generous to ourselves and give ourselves the extra five minutes?
Yes, thank you.
All right, well, we'll come back at two, thank you very much.
All right.